All right, everybody. All right, everyone, it's uh, cap been after six o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'll give it a minute, obviously Chief Walker is very popular, man. Congratulations again, chief. Congratulations again. All right, Sarah, what do you read? Here.
Commissioner Finch?
Make a motion to excuse Commissioner Finch.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Mayor Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Messer?
Here.
Commissioner Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Normile?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please bow your heads with me in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here, healthy and dedicated to the betterment of our beautiful town. I pray that you lead of, lead all of us to go through each day with servant hearts and the best of intentions, regardless of the thing, challenges before us, with the good of all at the forefront always. And please help us all to remember how blessed we are to live in a paradise surrounded by all things beautiful. Our home, our families, our friends, as an honor promised and should never be taken for granted. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and face the flag for the president. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, next item up would be the adoption of the agenda. Your motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Uh, item number six is a, uh, an extremely special one, is gonna be the, uh, retirement recognition of Chief Bill Walker. Uh, chief, would you mind joining me up front, please? Just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, the, the attendance and the, and the banter in the room is a testament to, uh, not only Chief Walker's thirty-six years of service to the town of Emerald Isle, but uh, a testament to the man that he is and the character that he possesses. Uh, thirty-six years in any role is, is astonishing and in, immeasurable in these, in these days' times, uh, to do thirty-six years of public service with the fire department in a town as beautiful as ours, uh, my gratefulness is, is immeasurable. I can't thank you enough, so, uh, I wanna congratulate you, I wanna thank you on behalf of, uh, our elected officials, our town staff and our community, uh, but we appreciate you very much. Uh, we've got a couple of things for you here, I'm just kinda, uh, read along as best I can without my readers that I graduated to a couple of weeks ago, so. Uh, this is the Town of Emerald Isle Board of Commissioners in appreciation for dedicated service. Whereas the Town of Emerald Isle does desire to recognize and honor public employees of the town for dedicated and distinguished service to the community. And whereas Chief William Bill Walker served as fire chief for thirty-four years and has rendered dedicated service to the Town of Emerald Isle and made significant accomplishments in the area of fire services and protection for over thirty-six years. And whereas Chief Walker was instrumental in Emerald Isle becoming a Carolina Star certified town and assuring the town's safety policies were up to date. And whereas Chief Walker implemented a beach wheelchair program that other coastal towns now model. And whereas he has made significant accomplishments in the areas of beach safety, creating a water rescue program, and whereas he has worked to merge the fire and EMS departments together. Whereas Chief Walker has been a true gift to his coworkers, mayors and boards. Whereas it is the desire of the Town of Emerald Isle to recognize Chief Walker's dedicated services he completes this chapter known as Fire Chief. Now therefore I, Jason Holland, Mayor of Emerald Isle, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, extend our sincerest best wishes to Chief Bill Walker as he undertakes this new chapter in his book of life, a chapter that includes doing whatever he pleases, whenever he pleases, a chapter entitled Retirement. Proclaim this ninth day of May two thousand twenty-three. Jason Holland, Mayor, Emerald Isle. Congratulations, sir. All right, another, uh, token of our appreciation, uh, Emerald Isle, the Town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation and gratitude to Fire Chief William Bill Walker in recognition of your outstanding service to the Town of Emerald Isle, embodying our values of integrity, commitment and service, and for exemplifying steadfast dedication and loyalty. You made a difference in Emerald Isle. We wish you success and happiness in your future retirement. On behalf of the mayor, Board of Commissioners, staff and citizens of the Town of Emerald Isle, presented this ninth day of May two thousand twenty-three. Lightened this time, uh, we have one more thing for Chief Walker, uh, any of Chief Walker's family that's in attendance, if you'll please join us up front. Any and all, we have room. You're gonna need both hands. Thank you. There we go. That looks better. All right, uh, one more for you there, chief. Uh, state of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor. Reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning and seal of William Bill Walker, I do buy these presents confer the order of the longleaf pine. With the rank of ambassador extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast and select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the longleaf pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong go great. Here's to down home, the old North State. Signed, Governor Roy Cooper, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Congratulations to you, sir. I'm not gonna ask you if you'd like to say a few words, I'm gonna kinda make you.
I really don't know what to say, I don't, uh, I don't usually make speeches. I would say that, uh, I really can't take credit for everything. My whole career, I've always looked at myself as a coach, not the leader. It's all because of the team in the back that's made everything happen. It's nothing this town can't do. The fire department can handle everything. Uh, any task that comes up, they, they jump on and take care of it. I was just there for the ride to watch them. So, I really appreciate everything.
It's okay to smile, chief. It's alright, smile. You done now?
That's a lot of hard work, chief.
I'm gonna build another wall.
Yes, sir, thank you, and, and, uh, it doesn't need to go without saying thank you to Chief Walker's family for supporting him through all those years. Uh, I know there's probably a lot of, uh, days, nights, weekends when you wish he was there, you were worried about him and you just wanted him to be back home. He's with you now. Thank you all. All right, that's gonna be a hard act to follow right there, but, uh, again, congratulations, chief, I'm extremely happy for you and grateful for your years of service, sir. Uh, item number seven on the, uh, agenda will be the awards presentation, our scholarship presentation for the two thousand twenty-three fishing tournament scholarship winners. Commissioner Taylor?
I could have any of my team members come up here if they would please, it's on the, Says it's on, it's on.
All right, Lisa, so my name's Mark Taylor, uh, first off, very honored to be one of your commissioners and I truly enjoy the job and it's been a great blessing, but the, one of the most funnest, I guess that's a proper word to say, is being part of this team up here with these three guys, and we got about six or seven total in there, some of them couldn't make it tonight due to obligations, but this is my fishing tournament team up here. We got Ron, Jim and Ed right now. Jim's our waymaster, Ron's in charge of all the scholarships and Ed writes all our rules and stuff for the fishing tournament. But we work as a team and we have one, one day a year that we do this fishing tournament, and that's it. But it takes a whole year to just to plan this thing out, to make everything work right, a lot of sponsors that come apart for us and just make this happen. The good news is, um, every year's been a great success to us, we've been able to give away a little bit of money each year to, uh, continuing education for local high school graduates and stuff, so very happy about that, but I'm gonna hand the mic over to Ron that's in charge of the scholarship program and let him do it, and I'll just hand you these, uh, these other items here.
Thank you very much. As, uh, some of you know, um, as part of the annual fishing tournament, we have an auction in association with the captains meeting the night before the tournament. And we've been extremely successful and have raised a significant amount of money through that auction. And we have used it to fund scholarships for graduating seniors from the four public high schools in Carteret County plus Swansboro High School. And we've had a little bit left over that we've given to the town for professional development and to fund some special projects. But tonight, we're gonna recognize the scholarship winners. Each of these folks is gonna receive three thousand dollars. They can apply it to any college or university or, uh, technical or professional school that they elect to go to. And after we give out eighteen thousand dollars tonight, we will have given out fifty-four thousand in the last four years, which I think is fairly respectable. So, um, without further ado, if Nathan Prechen-Fried, Fred, Fried, excuse me for butchering your name, would come forward. Nathan is a senior at Swansboro High School. There you go. We have to reshuffle a little bit because we're, we're missing two folks tonight, two winners. Uh, one of them happens to be a starting second baseman on her softball team, high school softball team. And the other one is a baseball player, and both teams are in their playoffs and they both have a game tonight. So, that's why they're not here, so we'll, we'll, we'll recognize them shortly. Uh, if, uh, Diane Trejo Martinez would come up, please? Congratulations, sir. Let me get my notes here.
Feel like I got a big deck of cards.
Yeah, you, you do. I'm gonna take that one and that one, and you can hang on to those two. Uh, if Wyatt Novacek would come up, please? Is that all right?
Yeah, somewhat.
Somewhat right? Hang on a second. Uh, Wyatt is from, uh, East Carteret High School and is receiving three thousand dollars. Uh, Kale Guthrie? Kale is also from East Carteret. Okay, um, is Ms. Tostow here? Excellent. Alicia Tostow, who's also from East Carteret, is playing softball tonight in a playoff, and her grandmother is here to receive her. And the other winner is, uh, Jackson Spruill, he's from, um, West Carteret High School, and he's playing in baseball playoff this evening, so we'll see that he gets his award. So, uh, please join me in recognizing these outstanding young folks.
Thanks, Ron, thanks for doing a great job for us, thanks to all the students. I tell you what, it was a hard year this year to try to pick them, cause you get these people coming in with, um, like four point eight, five point one GPAs, I'm like, I didn't even know you could go that high when I was in high school, so, pretty amazing, uh, group of guys and ladies here, and, uh, it was interesting reading their stories about what they were gonna go do and what they were planning on becoming and stuff, and part of the part with the tournament was, we wanted to give back, so, we're hoping now that we're giving to some local kids, so they got roots here in our county and stuff, and we hope when you go out and get educated, you'll come back and teach us a few things over here and, and maybe come back and share some of your knowledge with us and stuff, but I hope the money goes a long ways for you, and, um, we're proud to have you as, um, winners of our scholarship, it's been a great honor to, uh, watch you win, and I was amazed at the hard work that you did all through high school, and it's gonna be amazing to see what you turn out, uh, as you head through the college years and stuff, so congratulations, thank the town for supporting the fishing tournament, thanks for our sponsors, and thanks for all you for coming out to watch this happen tonight, it means a lot to us, thank you very much.
Very, very nice job, everybody, congratulations to all our scholarship recipients, uh, thank you, Mark, for spearheading the fishing tournament, thank you for all of the, uh, committee members, volunteers, sponsors and, uh, fishermen and fisherwomen there, it, it wouldn't be possible without all of you, so thank you very, very much for that. Uh, let's see, item eight, we've got a, uh, few proclamations that I wanna read for you guys really quickly, I'm not gonna rush through them, but I won't, uh, I won't meander either, but, uh, feel like they're all worthy of recognition. Our first proclamation, or next proclamation will be National Safe Boating Week, uh, quote-unquote wear it, from May twentieth through May twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-three. For nearly ninety million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. From coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time boating, sailing, paddling and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, we want to bring special attention to this pastime and remind recreational boaters of a few tips to ensure their loved ones are safe and responsible while exploring our nation's waterways. Proper planning for a long day of boating begins even before leaving home. Getting a free vase, vessel safety check and taking a boating safety course at the beginning of the boating season, filing a float plan with a trusted family member or friend, checking the weather before boating are keys, key steps to enjoyable time boating. Every boater should wear a U.S. Coast Guard approved life jacket at all times while boating. Drowning remains the number one cause for death for recreational boaters each year, and the majority of drowning recreation, drowning victims in recreational boating accidents are not wearing a life jacket. Safe and responsible boating includes never operating a boat while under the influence of drugs or alcohol and knowing basic navigation rules. Year-round people continue to enjoy that all our natural environment has to offer through the joy of boating. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to the important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water. Whereas on average, six hundred and fifty people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately three-fourths of these are fatalities caused by drowning, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment or environmental factors. Whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Whereas today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive and more wearable than styles of years past. Now therefore I, Jason Holland, Mayor of Emerald Isle, hereby proclaim the week of May twentieth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, as National Safe Boating Week in Emerald Isle, and the start of a year-round effort to promote safe boating. I urge all of those who boat to wear it and practice safe boating habits. Proclaim this ninth day of May two thousand twenty-three. Jason Holland, Mayor. Our next proclamation will recognize National Police Week, Respect, Honor and Remember, May fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as National Police Week. Whereas the members of the law enforcement play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the Town of Emerald Isle. Whereas it is important to note that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement officers. And whereas the men and women of Law Enforcement Department in the Town of Emerald Isle serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protect them against violence and disorder, and provide a vital public service. Now therefore I, Jason Holland, Mayor of Emerald Isle, do hereby recognize the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, as National Police Week in the Town of Emerald Isle, and urge all citizens to recognize these officers' faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities. Proclaim this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-three. Jason Holland, Mayor. Our next proclamation is National Public Works Week, Ready and Resilient, May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas public works officials, excuse me, whereas public works professionals focus on our infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the Town of Emerald Isle. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the Town of Emerald Isle to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the two thousand twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, I, Jason Holland, Mayor of the Town of Emerald Isle, do hereby designate the week of May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. And witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and call as the seal of the state, proclaim this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-three. Jason Holland, Mayor. Our next proclamation is Emergency Medical Services Week, Rising to the Challenge. Whereas North Carolina's medical, emergency medical service system is a vital public service, whereas the members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide life-sustaining care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas over the years, the quality of emergency care has dramatically improved and the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas our citizens benefit daily from the dedicated efforts, knowledge and skills of the emergency medical team, career volunteer, technicians, paramedics, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, rescue squad workers, firefighters, public safety telecommunicators, public information, education and relations specialists, emergency vehicle maintenance technicians, administrators, educators, disaster response personnel, and others who receive specialized training and, and continuing education to enhance and maintain their lifesaving skills. Whereas injury prevention, public education and the appropriate use of the emergency medical services system will help reduce healthcare costs. Whereas to recognize the value and accomplishments of the emergency medical services team, we set aside, set aside a special period to observe these contributions of the men and women to our people here in Emerald Isle and the state of North Carolina. Now therefore I, Jason Holland, Mayor of the Town of Emerald Isle, do hereby, hereby proclaim May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Emerald Isle, and call upon citizens to observe this period with appropriate programs and activities. Proclaim this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-three. Jason Holland, Mayor. And our last proclamation of the evening will be National Beach Safety Week. Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Emerald Isle represent a world-renowned recreational resource, whereas Emerald Isle's residents and visitors alike are drawn to those beaches by, by the millions each year for water and beach activities, whereas the aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents, that can be effectively managed through public awareness, awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards. Whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer each beach season. Whereas Emerald Isle's residents and visitors alike must remember, swim near lifeguard, learn to swim, learn rip current safety, never swim alone, designate a water watcher, alcohol and water don't mix, feet-first water entry, life jackets save lives, observe signs and flags, beat the heat and block the sun. Now therefore I, Jason Holland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Emerald Isle, do hereby proclaim May twenty-second through the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, as National Beach Safety Week in Emerald Isle, and urge all residents using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children. Proclaim this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-three. Jason Holland, Mayor. Thank you all for allowing me to go through this. Uh, all right, item number nine would be the introduction of a new employee. Okay. All right. Made a, there we go. Uh, in our public works department, I actually had the pleasure of meeting this young man over at the, uh, rec center today, he was, uh, completing some, uh, upgrades and repairs over in the weight room, I'd like to welcome to the public works department, Mr. Tyler Evans. Welcome Tyler. All right, uh, next up will be our public service announcements.
Hi, I'm Candace Dooley, your Director of Parks and Recreation. Here in the community center, we are thrilled that we've been able to schedule the renovations that have been highly requested here. We're gonna start with the painting of our gymnasium, along with the hallways, our entryway and our weight room. Then, we're gonna steam and sanitize the floors here in the gymnasium. We look forward to freshening up our facility. Beginning on Wednesday, May the third, through Tuesday, May the sixteenth, our weight room will be closed. And Monday, May the eighth, through the fifteenth of May, the entire community center will be closed to the public. On May twenty-second, the community center will reopen, but the gymnasium and indoor restrooms will remain closed. We're hopeful that on May twenty-fourth, we will open the entire gymnasium. All of these dates are subject to change, so please keep an eye on our website for any updates. We apologize for any inconvenience that our closures may cause you, but we look forward to showcasing our renovations once you're able to return to our facility.
Attention golf cart enthusiasts, join us on May thirteenth from five to seven P.M. at the Western Regional Ocean Access for a special golf cart show and tell event where you can showcase your golf cart and learn everything you need to know about these vehicles. Do you own a golf cart but don't know much about it? Or maybe you're considering buying one and wanna learn more before you take the plunge? This event is for you. During the event, you'll have the opportunity to learn about important topics like golf cart versus low-speed vehicles, lithium versus conventional batteries, safety requirements and the consequences of violations. You'll also get hands-on experience with a simulated impaired driving test and learn tips for driving your golf cart safely and responsibly. We'll also discuss where you can and can't go with your golf cart, where you can park, and where to go for repairs and inspections. And for those of you who still have questions, there will be plenty of experts on hand to answer them, so mark your calendars for May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from five to seven P.M. And join us at the Western Regional Ocean Access for a fun and informative event all about golf carts. We can't wait to see you there.
All right, Golf Cart Show and Tell, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from five to seven at the Western Regional Ocean Access. Police Educating the Public will be held May Police Educating the Public will be held May sixteenth, from ten to eleven A M. in the town board meeting room. Next Golf Cart Advisory Committee meeting will be held May sixteenth, from five thirty P M. to six thirty P M. Our next Planning Board meeting is May twenty-second, from six P M. to seven P M. Our next Coffee with a Cop will be May twenty-fifth, from nine A M. to ten A M. in the town boardroom. Memorial Day, May twenty-ninth, the town of Emerald Isle admin offices and the community center will be closed.
Are you ready for a fun-filled day of fishing? Then join us for the Emerald Isle Youth Fishing Derby. This event is free and open to kids ages five through twelve. It's a great opportunity for kids to learn about fishing and enjoy the great outdoors. There will be great prizes awarded in categories ranging from most unique fish to largest caught. And don't worry if you don't have any bait, we'll provide it while supplies last. But please bring your own rods and reels, as they will not be provided. This event is fun for the whole family, so come on down to the Bog Inlet Pier on Saturday, June third, two thousand twenty-three, from nine to eleven A M., and join us for the Emerald Isle Youth Fishing Derby.
That's a good one there. If you hadn't had an opportunity to go down and check that out, go down to the pier on June third. It's a lot of fun watching those kids catch fish. All right. Our next Neighborhood Watch Meeting, June sixth, from four P M. to five P M. Our next Board of Commissioners Meeting will be held June thirteenth, here in the boardroom, from six P M. to seven thirty P M. All right. Next item I've got up, I believe I've got a beach safety update from Deputy Fire Chief
I'm glad that we're in here tonight because I do not want to be out there right now. I'm just waiting on that pager to start talking to me for a lightning strike or something like that, so hopefully none of that happens. But thank y'all for being here tonight, and thank y'all for having me, commissioners. Just want to give a brief update. We've had a rather busy end of April, start of May, in our ocean safety and water rescues. We are coming up to full staff, May twenty-fourth, with our full guards on the beach strand, four starting out in the morning, three coming in around lunchtime, noon. So I'll put seven guards on the beach strand. We currently have about nineteen guards that did receive word from one of our returning guards coming back from the University of Alabama, and he's bringing along his brother, so that's great. They get swim tested Thursday. We are participating in a child fair on Thursday with Swansboro High School as well, so hopefully we'll have our guards up to twenty, if not a little bit over, knowing our summertime, especially how we are today with ninety-degree weather. It's brought this rain in here, but look to have a busy season, I want to remind. It takes a community. We have visitors coming to our area from all over the world. If you see somebody out there, especially red flag days, reach over to them, hey, you know, flags are red today, means, you know, recommended not swimming. Don't go out there in the water, enjoy the sand, visit some of our local businesses, but don't get in that water. Also, I do want to touch on, we had a rather busy past weekend where we had a couple air medical calls. Just wanted to make everybody aware, be safe, use caution out there. Anytime you are driving, pay attention, so just remain safe this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Item number eleven will be the public comment portion of our agenda. Public have the opportunity to address the board about any items of concern. Please remember, try to keep your comments to three minutes and call our first public speaker.
Randy Hanford.
Steve, we're in. You have to hold it close.
Hey, guys, members of the board, Mayor Holland. My name's Randy Hanford. My wonderful wife and I own Snappers Grill and Steam Bar. I'm not here today to gripe about food trucks. I think we found common ground on most of that. But what I would like to talk about is parking. That's one. With my parking lot being where it is, I have to deal with it every single day. And the bad part about having to deal with it is people have gotten to where they're not so nice. I mean, we can tell them, do not park there. They flip us off, call us ugly names. I mean, it's really bad, and they dare us to tow them. And I hate towing people. I've never towed anybody yet, but it's got to come to that. And part of the problem is the lack of parking for Emerald Isle. You guys spend a lot of money getting people to come to the island, not only weekly runners, but daily beachgoers. And when they come to the island, and I do encounter a lot of people that, I'll say, well, guys, have you tried the Eastern Access? Yeah, it's full. Have you tried the Western Access? Yeah, it's full. And I'm like, you know, and the pier is, and Mike and Shirley are my next-door neighbors, so, you know, we have a lot of talks about this, but we have employees that come onto the island, and what's happening is people coming from the west will turn the right turn signals on, and basically the pier is one out, one in. So when their pier, when all their parking gets full, that line comes all the way down Bog Inlet Drive, turns and goes beyond, usually beyond Dairy Queen. Sometimes I've seen it down to the center there, and people just sit with their right turn signals on for, I've sat in that line for forty-five minutes. I don't mind bridge traffic, because at least something's being accomplished. But for people just to sit there with their turn signals on, and I have employees that'll say, Randy, look, I'm right down here, you know, I was going to be on time for work, and then there are forty minutes to get seventy yards down the road. And so something's got to be done about that traffic. And then if you look, and you can tell, and then it starts backing traffic up everywhere, all the way through the roundabout, all the way back, and you can tell that's the stopping point, because if you look east on that side of the road, there's no traffic. So everybody setting stop with their right turn signal on is, there's no way to get around them because there's so much traffic coming the other way. It's just something that needs to be addressed. If I could help in any way, you know, I'm right there, if there's anything we could do, we'd be glad to help, but parking is a big problem on Emerald Isle, and that's something I don't think the city foresaw back in the day. I know property has become so expensive, I don't know what can be done about it at this point, because it would take a lot of property. I understand that the East and West Access is pretty much at capacity with the sewer and the septic and everything that goes along with that, so the trash, they're both at capacity, and people then just go to the pier. Now they can't get to the pier, and it's really causing a lot of issues. So if you all could help us with that, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Ronnie.
Well, let's see if it's on. Well, it's me again, and I'm not coming here to, I do want to say something, Mayor Holland and Board of Commissioners, you know, three minutes, I know you allow us to speak for three minutes, but it's, sometimes it's not long enough to get some really important issues to you. But what I would like to say is that we got, our budget is coming up, and I know we got a thirteen million, a proposed thirteen point six million dollar budget. And, you know, I've looked at the salaries and benefits, we're looking at about eight point three million is going to be paid in salaries and benefits. Don't leave a lot of money to do infrastructure. And I've looked at the infrastructure, that what we need to do, and I could go on and on about that, but I think y'all really need to take a look at that. The other thing is vehicles. Do you know how many vehicles we've got that are, that's in the town of Emerald Isle now? I mean, that question is, I look at, I look around, I see a vehicle here, a vehicle there, are they all being used? Do we need that many vehicles? I think we got like sixty-three, sixty-four vehicles, not counting the other, the fire trucks and stuff like that, which we need. But I'm just wondering, does everybody need a vehicle? Are we furnishing vehicles for employees now? I mean, that's a question I'd like, I'd like to be answered. And I just, I just, you know, I'm real concerned about, you know, the way, the way the money's being spent here. And like I said at the last meeting, I don't want us to get like the federal government where it's totally out of control. And it seems like we're headed down that road, but in a very small scale. But guys, when things come across your desk, look at them. I mean, you question, if there's something being spent, say, hey, do we need this? Or do we need this? Sometimes it's not needed, and, but I just hate, I just see a lot of waste. That's just me. But that's just because I'm a businessman, and I always looked at my business, if there's waste, I try to save it, I try to stop it. And y'all don't need to, you need to look at everything, and I sure do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Yes, ma'am.
Is this on?
Yes, sir.
Good, good, good. Okay. My topic tonight is the ill-conceived program that removed our trash cans from our beach. A program like this makes taxpayers question your judgment. How do we get into this situation? I don't know of many residents or taxpayers who think that trash cans are a problem. I remember almost twenty years ago, as houses and walkways increased, beach trash accumulation on Ocean Drive became a terrible problem. The solution was to put the cans on the beach to be emptied daily. It has worked well for nearly twenty years, although the cost has increased like everything else. What has happened to change, a good thing, that is supported by so many taxpayers? Whose idea was it to take our trash cans off the beach? The problem appears to be the influence of the Surf Rider Foundation on our town staff and maybe even some of your commissioners. This group of self-devoted activists, environmental lawyers, concern themselves with cleaning up other people's beaches as they define it. Check out their webpage. They have decided that trash cans don't belong on our beaches, and town staff has bought into this idea. This activist group does not live here, or maybe won't, and does not pay taxes here like we do. Why should they be allowed to decide or influence what is good for us? Just two weeks ago, we found out we can't have glass on the beach. No more bottled beer. Says who? The Surf Rider Foundation. Check out their webpage. Town staff points out that many other beach towns don't have cans on the beach, trash cans on the beach. Have you ever considered that our current use of cans is an attraction to visitors? Maybe other towns should be more like us. If there's a significant problem with trash accumulating behind the firehouse, as suggested by Commissioner Norma, fix that problem with daily scare removal. Don't transfer the problem to each taxpayer and guests. I urge you to stop this program right away. Vote tonight to stop this misconceived program. If you insist on a period to see how it goes, please establish that period tonight. I think thirty July is an appropriate time to end the trial period after three months of heavy beach usage. Do an online survey, which we have done before, of the taxpayers during July to determine the degree of public acceptance of your program. Put the interests of taxpayers as you were hired and elected to serve over the special interests of these outside environmental activists. Check out their website. I would appreciate a motion tonight to establish this trial period. Please do not allow this subject to become an election issue in November. The town deserves better. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Wooton. Yes, ma'am.
Are we live?
We're live. How are you, Paige?
Hey. My name is Paige Taylor Ward, and I live at three twenty-six Live Oak Street. And I am here too, to talk about all the problems we seem to be having. I read the minutes from November twenty-second regarding our electric vehicles. Thank you, Mr. Finch, for voting no. He was the only one. This is not Cary, this is not Charlotte, this is not Durham, this is Emerald Isle. We have a small-town community with a small-town atmosphere. That's why everybody is here. It seems there's a disconnect between what the people want and the direction this town is going in, and it's not good. It's just like the dog park in the Maritime Forest. People showed up here repeatedly, month after month after month, to tell you no. We told you we'd not want the exercise stations in the Maritime Forest, yet you went ahead and spent over fifty thousand dollars of our money that should have been spent fixing up what we already have, which is in disrepair, instead of new projects that require maintenance, just like a disabled child, it will have care for the rest of its life, especially when you consider the elements that we live in. Another example is the U D O. This project has been going on for probably a year and a half. While you made changes to some of these ordinances, like six point four point four concerning our vegetation, our thirty-five percent natural area, you changed one word from staked, S-T-A-K-E-D, to fenced. That's wonderful, but they're not worth the paper they're written on. We don't enforce anything. You don't get to pick and choose what we enforce. You either enforce all of it, or you enforce none of it. And it's evidenced by just riding along Emerald Drive. You see signs all in the right of way. They shouldn't be there. I know you dread seeing me come up here month after month after month. Quite frankly, I wouldn't be here if we were doing what we were supposed to be doing, and you probably wouldn't be sitting through another scorcher of a meeting. Just because an employee makes an oversight or dereliction of duty, it doesn't make the violation legal, ordinance six point three five. Everything must become compliant, ordinance six point one and six point three. I've talked to y'all about this for three years. I'm here to step up, I'm here to stand up, I'm here to speak up, and I refuse to back up. We're not being good stewards. We need new leadership.
Thank you, Paige. Yes, ma'am.
Randy, I didn't know that you guys hashed everything out as far as the U D O, but I'm still going to talk on it a little bit. Last Saturday, I went to get a haircut. I was fourth in line, and I had to wait, so I waited. It was the barber at the K V Plaza. Could I have gone someplace else? Yeah. But during COVID, when he couldn't open his shop, he picked me up and he cut my hair in his garage. How soon we forget about our brick-and-mortar businesses and what they did just to survive? I wonder what my barber, Gary, would think about having a mobile barber shop on the island because I had to wait. I was there when Mr. Hanford at Snappers filled in his parking lot with sand to have outdoor seating so he could survive. I remember buying to-go plates from Catherine's two nights a week, even though things were tight, because no one could eat inside, and I was trying to help Mr. Ken stay open. I remember Mr. Morell, the owner of the E Club, met with the previous town planner and later the town manager about opening a food truck or trailer in an effort to stay open and survive during COVID. He was told he had to have ownership of that food truck or trailer to get approval. Yet today, there are food trucks operating on properties that they don't own. The hypocrisy is at times palpable. As far as food trucks being allowed on private property on Islander Drive between Emerald Drive and Louise Street, I ask why only there? Respectfully, I would say, look at who owns these properties. Respectfully, I would say, look at who owns these properties. The bottom line is, we don't need more food trucks. We need to realize that the foundation of our town business community is our brick-and-mortars. These business owners have weathered COVID with us. They have weathered hurricanes with us. They employ our neighbors and our children. They step up repeatedly to help when there is a need on this island. They are long-term, long-haul members of our community and our beach family. Too many times, we think, I don't want to wait to eat or to get a haircut. Life in today's world seems to be driven by instant gratification when maybe we need to take a step back and enjoy island time here in our little slice of paradise. Tourism is indeed the lifeblood of our businesses, but when we change to accommodate tourists and we forget our residents and our local businesses, I hope we don't change so much that the tourists can't remember why they chose to visit the island in the first place. If you look at the Purpose section of the UDO and you read the Emerald Isle Code of Ordinances, and even in Article 3, which we're going to go through tonight, one word is used repeatedly, and that word is preserve. Preserve vegetation, preserve our environment and natural resources, and preserve our small-town atmosphere. You know, EI used to be a family beach. Now EI is nice matters. Don't let it turn into EI a beach circus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, ma'am.
Peg Erway.
I have several things to address tonight, and some of them have already been spoken to. I settled here because of the small beach town atmosphere, but within the past few years, the small-town feeling is waning. I've been coming to these commissioners' meetings for about a year now. Very seldom have I heard any of you ask questions of proposals set forth by the town manager or from the residents giving comments. This lack is sad. You sit there with what seems to be your own agenda, and we public commenters are bothering you. What you are doing to the rec center is a Band-Aid on the building. But thank you for putting the, not putting the dog park in McLean's Bell Park. Traffic control on Emerald Drive at pedestrian crossings is dangerous. Can you consider lowering the speed limit during the busy season before someone gets hurt? Parking in the town is extremely lacking. Getting a larger budget, mostly for administration, is not necessarily better. Getting more money for more vehicles, for what you said last month, quote, morale, as you said, as you said last month, is not better, but putting fewer garbage cans on the beach is important? Then have new cans in the budget? I feel you got zapped. Do what you ran your elections on and do what you were elected to do. Keep Emerald Isle a small beach town with a budget that is under control and problems addressed in a timely manner.
David Rink.
David, what was his last name?
Rink.
David Rink? Sorry about that.
Marlene Rink.
Did you, were you guys just signing into the meeting by, or?
Yeah.
I got you, I got you. Perfect attendance, perfect attendance. Thank you, ma'am.
Lori Ahuna.
Sorry.
Lori Ahuna.
Lori, there she is.
I'm here once again on behalf of almost two dozen members of the community center, and we're hoping for a much better smelling and looking facility after the new paint and the floor cleaning is finished. However, you guys are all aware that our biggest goal has always been to get a new gym floor. We never intended the floor cleaning to be a long-term solution. It was just a long overdue maintenance item. Matt has told me that there will probably need to be a capital campaign for a new floor. I respectfully disagree. I believe that you're more than able to find the money for a new floor in this proposed budget. But are you willing to do it? That's the question. This new budget appears to just continue the pattern of expanding the town government and increasing salaries and benefits past an acceptable percentage. You have the power to act on what we're saying and have been saying for months. Listen to what we're asking for. Our requests are reasonable. I speak for myself now. At the federal level, we see a group of elitists who think they know better than the people they represent. Please don't make that mistake here, because trust me, we're not a bunch of stupid people. All of us made it here because we were successful in what we did for a living. We may not be able to control what's happening in DC or even in Raleigh, but we are going to try our best to keep our town the fabulous, funky, family beach town that we know and love. Please think long and hard about this new budget, and please, get us that new gym floor. Thanks.
Thanks, Lori.
Patricia Leonard.
Evening, Ms. Leonard.
Well, last time I brought up the end or the rear, and I'm doing the same thing tonight, I guess. I wasn't going to speak, but when I arrived, they told me I did a really good job last time, and what was I going to talk about tonight? I said, I'm not. But I do want to mention that I did look over the minutes from the April meeting. It noted that there were six outspoken community members, but there was actually nine. Everybody's name was not mentioned. Everybody's topic was not mentioned. It seems that there's select hearing and select documentation of what's being said. Last time, several shop and restaurant owners mentioned that there's lack of visitation, visitation by the board. Have any of you all visited a shop owner or a restaurant? Okay, that's good.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Right, Randy?
Yesterday. The day before the meeting of today. Just saying. What you need to do is listen to what your people say. They pay your salaries. They elected you to sit where you are. Respect what they're saying. Listen. Hear their suggestions and their needs. They're not just wants. They're what the town needs. And I think that's all. And thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lori, Lori Pol.
Lori Pol.
I'm here that after listening to some of this, I'd much prefer to speak just to individuals that have a bitch list. I don't, I don't appreciate the way some of y'all will see me do your, I think.
Lori, let's, let's do it, let's sort of be on record.
I'm just amazed. I'm amazed by some of the behavior of some of these people who have concerns, but instead of speaking to any of these people, you just come up and banter. I mean, I'm disgusted by it. I'm leaving because, not because I'm not interested, I'm interested, very interested in what goes on in Emerald Isle, and I'd like it to be correct. I just don't understand the name-calling, and I'm, I'm not real crazy about what I see, so I'd, originally, I was here to ask questions about something, and I really don't want to have anything to do with it now.
Ma'am, sir, we'll, we'll respect our time at the podium, just like we did everybody else's. Thank you, Lori.
No more comments.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, item number 12 on the agenda will be the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Uh, let's see. Item number 13 would be the Newtown Attorney Firm Appointment. The board is asked to appoint a new attorney to represent the town of Emerald Isle. Is there any discussion from the board or motions?
Mayor, I make a motion to appoint the law firm of Grady Quattlebaum P LLC as the new firm to represent the town of Emerald Isle effective May 9th, 2023, and if we have a positive vote, I say we welcome him to the town.
Uh, motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Welcome, welcome.
All right, item number 14, presentation of the recommended fiscal year 2324 budget presentation. Mr. Zap.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. As indicated, we are here tonight to discuss and present the draft budget for fiscal year 2324, which would begin effective July 1st, 2023, and carry you forward to June 30th, 2024. And tonight, we're going to use a little bit of a different medium and try to communicate as clearly as possible. In addition to this brief presentation, you'll have a comprehensive budget video that will be shared here momentarily. The highlights of the budget, again, include a $13.6 million total budget across all funds, of which approximately $846,000 of that will be dedicated to beach nourishment. There is no new tax rate adjustment. We continue with a proposed tax rate of the current issuance of 16.5 cents. There is a minor adjustment that is necessary in solid waste collection. Unfortunately, the cost of recycling will be increasing from $50 a ton to $100 a ton, which is tipping fee control that is outside of our influence. And secondarily, the cost for solid waste will be increasing to $54.50 per ton, and based on the tonnage of collections community-wide throughout Emerald Isle, that will result in an increase proposed of $1.66 per month. There are no new employees, with still 75 full-time individuals, including the proposed retirements and adjustments within departments, as we saw tonight, inclusive of the retirement of Chief Bill Walker. Medical rates, benefits, and costs for the community for employees would remain flat this year. We're pleased to share that we had a no-cost increase in those medical rates. And in Public Works, it includes $159,409 for street resurfacing, and our intention is to use the current Powell Bill funds in the existing fiscal year, mated with the upcoming year, $159,000 to do major repairs, as you've seen already progressing on Coast Guard Road. Our next major asphalt repair will incur and begin on Sound Drive as soon as our contractors are available. Again, want to remind the community and share with everyone how positive it has been that we've received $9.8 million in FEMA funding, $1.2 million in ARPA funding, and a potential for $2.6 million of additional funding, which brings us to approximately $15 million in funding that is non-tax-related for capital purchases, major storm water, and repairs across the community, and you'll see highlights of all of those. So again, no capital purchases are being proposed currently in your fiscal year 2324 budget due to the success of the staff and team in working to pursue those grant-funded dollars. So with that being said, I'd go ahead and we'd ask that our staff will play the video, and I'll be available to answer any questions that the board has following.
Thank you, Matt.
Hi, I'm Matt Zap, your town manager for Emerald Isle, and I'd like to talk to you today about your fiscal year 2324 draft budget. In the proposed budget, it's a $13.6 million total budget plan with $12.8 million of that being in the general fund and an additional $846,000 in beach nourishment. The great news is, no change to the tax rate, and we plan to maintain 16.5 cents to accomplish all these goals throughout Emerald Isle. There will be no additional personnel needed with 75 full-time employees and 120 to 130 seasonal, on-call, and part-time employees helping us to do our tasks during the peak of the season. One other area we'd like to highlight is the importance of our exceptional level of service with solid waste collection. We make approximately 36,000 stops per year on yard debris, and we collect trash twice per week, recycling once per week, and white-good collections as needed. The culmination of those services are provided at an annualized cost of only $275. But unfortunately, beginning effective July 1, 2023, the cost for tipping fees has increased. On solid waste, it will now be $54.50 per ton of trash and $100 per ton of recycling. And to make sure our budget balances is fair and equitable to all 6,600 consumers that use our service, the annualized cost for solid waste will be presented at $295 per year or a $1.66 per month increase. In addition to our standard $13 million local budget, we were also fortunate to secure over $10 million in outside grant funds, dominantly through FEMA for emergency preparation. Those funds will be utilized to purchase a new fire truck at $900,000, a second fire truck, and an additional $900,000, a pair of brand-new ambulances at $450,000 each, plus four jet skis and trailers totaling $68,000, which will be used for emergency and ocean rescue, a dump truck at $90,000, a loader and an additional $40,000, and emergency radios connecting all of our staff, their buildings, and equipment, all funded at $450,000. These are some of the highlights for non-local tax dollars that will be used to protect, serve, and provide for Emerald Isle. Another key component is the innovative way that Emerald Isle is providing safety equipment and vehicles for all of our town staff. We've engaged in a balanced program of both leasing and purchasing. Behind me, you'll see two new Jeeps. These are used for beach rescue and our ocean rescue lifeguard system. These units are leased through a commercial program. This lease program is revenue-positive and helps Emerald Isle save money each and every year and puts our people in a frontline piece of equipment so that we can serve you quicker, better, safer, and at a lower cost. So in addition to leasing, we still maintain, own, and purchase a portion of our fleet. This helps us keep a balanced operation as we provide services seven days a week, 365 days a year. But by operating new vehicles, we've driven our maintenance costs to near zero, and we've increased the fuel efficiency of our fleet, which helps us drive our fuel purchases substantially lower than in the past. Additionally, in fiscal year 2324, we will collect an estimated $846,000 towards beach nourishment, and those funds will go directly into the beach nourishment fund. Regarding personnel, we're looking to offer a 6% cost of living adjustment, which allows us to keep pace with the Southeast Region's CPI. Also, insurance costs have remained flat. We're pleased to announce that our medical, dental, optical insurance rates have remained at near-zero change, so we're looking to continue those exceptional benefits for the employees that make Emerald Isle what it is. When it comes to roadways, the Powell Bill funding from the state of North Carolina helps us maintain our roadway infrastructure within Emerald Isle. Each year, we receive approximately $160,000 in Powell Bill funds generated dominantly from the state's gas tax. Those funds are then reinvested to make sure and maintain our roadways are safe, clear, and passable. This year, look for repairs to be completed on Coast Guard Road in Sound Drive dominantly. Additionally, as funds permit, we will be looking for expanse and improvements within our sidewalk connectivity. our sidewalk connectivity, potentially at Lee Avenue and at the point. One other exciting improvement to share is the recent expanse to the turn lane coming off of the bridge to Coast Guard Road. In partnership with the Department of Transportation, the town of Emerald Isle was able to work and expand the turn lane. Approximately 4,108,000 cars entered that intersection in 2022, and nearly 25% to 26% of those cars on a daily basis travel Coast Guard, which means that 1.4 million cars annually travel down Coast Guard Road. By expanding that turn lane, we can help the queue with one out of every four cars making their way to their destination easier. The average homeowner within Emerald Isle has a home valued at $403,000, providing a base tax of approximately $664 per median home. Plus $295 in solid waste fees provides a median-average payment of $959 per year for all the services provided by Emerald Isle. So as we close today, I want to thank you for taking the time to watch this video and learn more about this beautiful municipality that we have the privilege and honor of calling home in Emerald Isle. So as you look forward, on May 9th, we'll be presenting this draft budget to the public. On June 13th, we'll have a public hearing with an opportunity to vote and take action on the proposed draft budget. If you have any questions, be sure to give us a call, shoot us an email, or stop on by one of the open public meetings. And remember, our meetings are held on the second Tuesday of each month at 6 o'clock PM at the Town Board.
All right. Thank you, Matt and staff, for that information. Not asking for any formal action from the Board tonight. We'll confirm the date for the, uh, public hearing and potential adoption at, uh, June 13th at 6:00 PM at our next Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, item number 15, uh, related to FEMA 428, uh, to consider the awarding of Fire Station 2 Design and Build Contract. Ask Deputy Chief Mathias back up.
Uh, yes, uh, again, uh, here tonight, uh, to talk about, we, um, want to move forward with the, uh, plans to remodel and hopefully a complete rebuild, which is 100% 428 grant-funded, uh, so there's no cost into the taxpayers, none of the stakeholders. Um, we put this RFQ out in February, working with town staff, uh, Town Manager, and got the, uh, bids back the end of February, so it was about 28 days. We, uh, had eight bids come in. Uh, staff, uh, myself, along with Assistant Chief Askew, uh, EMS Coordinator Jones worked through these eight bids. We narrowed those down to four in April. We had, uh, interviews with that, and so we, uh, have selected a firm, Manns Woodward Studios. They have over 16 years in emergency services, uh, along the East Coast, along the West Coast, uh, throughout the 50 states. And so, uh, we feel confident with, uh, what they proposed in their bid. Everybody was given the same bid, um, and the effort that they put into that and the care, uh, really stood out to us in the first stage, stood out to us in the second stage. And so I'm here tonight, uh, Commissioners, to ask, uh, for approval of moving forward with those plans, uh, with Manns Woodward Studios.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, any questions, uh, from the Board to... Mr. Mathias. Hold on, tongue tie. All right, uh, any discussion amongst the Board? I'll ask for motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to select Manns Woodward Studios as the design-build architects to assist Emerald Isle with the FEMA 428-funded reconstruction process of Emerald Isle Fire Station Number 2.
All right, motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Bill. All right, uh, item number 16 is the amendments to Chapter 10, Article 3, Business Registration of Satellite Merchant. We'll start with the staff presentation from Planning Director Michelle Eitner.
Good evening, everyone. While I'm waiting for, um, the PowerPoint to queue up, I appreciate everybody that's here in the audience to speak at the public hearings. I know we've got two tonight, um, one for this amendment, and then one for, um, a full suite of amendments to the U D O, so there's going to be two. Tonight, I bring you reconfigured amendments to the ordinances regarding food trucks. As you can see on the town's goals list for 2023, the third item is the continuation to the U D O updates. That project has been underway in some form or another since July 2021. Business regulations are actually in Chapter 10 of the town's Code of Ordinances, whereas the U D O is in Appendix A, but we've included it as part of comprehensive grouping of land use-related ordinances for updates, like the changes we made in January to the building regulations in Chapter 6. We've pulled this set of amendments out from the rest of the Phase 2. In the changes, we've proposed to codify the business registration process, as well as update the rules regarding satellite merchants, which we often shorten to food trucks. To best understand the drafted changes, it's important to see what's actually currently permitted in Emerald Isle. These are just two pages. Um, this is the current ordinance regarding itinerant merchants and satellite merchants, which were established in 2015. It specifically addresses itinerant merchants, which are like pushcarts or roving ice cream trucks, and satellite merchants like food trucks and produce stands. Itinerant merchants are prohibited entirely, and satellite merchants are prohibited except for in certain areas. Here are two sections of our current ordinance that are enlarged, and it includes an amendment made last March, 2022, to increase the number of exempt properties. These satellite merchants are currently allowed, one per property at a time, with written permission from the owner of that private property in these specific areas pursuant to an annual permit that we do not currently charge for. This map shows the allowed areas for satellite merchants to operate, not including the additional areas on Islander Drive that were added last March, but I have updated that map since I've made this slide. The current ordinance prohibits satellite merchants except for in these places. Our proposed ordinance allows them in these same select places in which they're already allowed, and only allows the ability for bars to host satellite merchants from 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM. The proposed ordinance change predominantly sets up procedure for annual permits with a fee and formal enforcement with fines. In addition to formalizing satellite merchant permitting process, the proposed amendments also formalize the business registration process that's already in place. This is a free, one-time registration for brick-and-mortar businesses, or traditional businesses, to provide business contact information, comply with applicable zoning codes, and connect with the fire department for their inspection schedules. But back to satellite merchants, which have been a leading topic of conversation for five months now. These amendments, which are shown in the draft with red deletions and blue additions, propose to formalize the permitting procedure and operation standards. The ordinance currently authorizes the planning department with assistance from the police department with enforcement of this article. The proposed changes add formal enforcement procedures for complaints, violations, and fines. Reports may be made to my office during business hours, to the non-emergency police phone number after hours, or via email to planning@emeraldisle-nc at any time. The location standards carry forward all areas that are currently exempt of the prohibition, AKA allowed, as well as allows bars to host satellite merchants during the specific late-night hours of 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM. It carries forward that written permission from the private property owner must be provided prior to permitting, and that only one satellite merchant operation is allowed per property at a time, and that public streets are not allowed for operation. The ordinance format also provides the ability to relatively easily add or remove provisions in the future should we need to. As noted earlier, this specific set of amendments has been under discussion for several months. With proposal drastically reduced from the originally drafted amendments, staff requests that the Board hold a public hearing prior to making a motion to adopt these amendments.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, before I ask for a motion to open the public hearing, Commissioner Vogel has asked me for a minute or two, so I'm gonna give the floor to Commissioner Vogel.
Thank you, Mayor. So having considered this matter thoroughly and with the advice of counsel, based on the appearance of a conflict, concerns brought to me questioning my ability to remain impartial on this topic, and my own concerns regarding maintaining the integrity of this Board's decision-making process, I believe I do have a conflict of interest that may keep me from making an impartial decision at this time. So I would ask that the Board allow me to recuse myself from this vote.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to allow Commissioner Vogel to recuse herself from the discussion and vote regarding satellite merchants.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you. Uh, this time, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Start with our first speaker.
No one's signed up.
All right, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing's closed. Uh, any discussion by the Board? Any proposed motions from the Board?
Make a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to the Emerald Isle Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Business Regulations, Article 3, Business Registration and Satellite Merchants as proposed by the U D O Committee, and included in the agenda packet to allow satellite merchants at bars from 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote of three ayes. Uh, motion's carried. Thank you. All right, uh, item 17, the Phase 2 amendments of the Unified Development Ordinance. I'll ask Planning Director Michelle Eitner back up. Oh, you're already back up. Sorry.
I'll always be up here. I'll always be just amending something, I think. So... So while Phase 2 amendments to the U D O span the entire document, hundreds of pages, uh, we've provided a shortlist of changes on this slide, um, and a longer four-page, uh, you know, section-by-section summary of changes, which is provided in your agenda packet. One of the main changes of this phase include update to use regulations. I took our existing use-specific regulations and split them into three categories: principal uses, accessory uses, and temporary uses, to better identify the relationship of the use to the land. A lot of the changes in this chapter are, are a relation of these use types to their correct categories, uh, but I do want to discuss a few of the new accessory and temporary uses, use types included in this update. Um, the table of permitted and special uses included some accessory uses that weren't otherwise discussed in the remainder of the ordinance, so those were removed in favor of use types that now include standards, like it previously referenced servants' quarters, and now we have accessory dwelling units. We've also added accessory and temporary uses of late interest, such as trash corrals, pods, and little free libraries. There are updates throughout the entire ordinance that reflect current statutory language for mobile homes, which are now called manufactured homes, and travel trailers or campers, which are now recreational vehicles. Parking space requirements for single-family homes and duplexes have been expanded. Instead of only two required spaces per dwelling unit, there is now a chart that requires a number of onsite parking spaces which relate to the size of the structure. This is anticipated to reduce impacts to surrounding properties and allow for better onsite infrastructure for larger homes and duplexes in town. The ordinance currently requires that the 35% natural area be staked off prior to permitting. No specifications are provided as to the method of demarcation, so we are proposing that silt fencing, or orange construction fencing, sometimes referred to as tree-protection fencing, be used to provide a better physical and visual barrier between the reserved natural area and the developing area of permitting projects. We're also proposing to require that projects provide a stone construction entrance to reduce damage to town streets by having machinery that's used during the construction process. Several contractors are already using this open aggregate stone at the entrance to construction sites, but this provision would require it for large projects if they don't already have a driveway connection at the road. We were provided feedback earlier today that there's a typo on page 145 of the 231 pages of the U D O, um, in Section 6.3.3.2.2B regarding Stormwater Management Plan Standards. Um, this subsection doesn't have any proposed changes in the draft, um, but after review, the town attorney agreed that this is more of a clerical error that could be easily addressed at this time without affecting current procedure. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. The section reads, "Whenever possible, indigenous vegetation shall be retained and protected. Where this is not possible, suitable nature species shall be planted." Um, so we're looking to, uh, replace the word "nature" with "natural," um, and so staff would like to include that clerical change into the suite of amendments that you're reviewing.
I don't think any votes required. Let's make the change. This is just tentative, and we're still, uh, working on it.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of it, um, you know, as soon as we had it available.
Michelle, to be clear for those listening, uh, no one's voting on anything yes or no on this particular part of the U D O tonight. There was a clerical error discovered. The word "nature" was in place instead of the word "natural," uh, so we're not voting anything in or out, we're just simply correcting a typo.
Um, so I, I had a little bit of a timeline on my next slide. Um, I'll note that this is Phase 2 of U D O updates, um, and it's Phase 2 of the efforts since I've come on board in July. There was a whole year of discussion prior to my arrival in July. Phase 1 took place last fall and was adopted in January, with Phase 2 following. U D O Committee met several times over the first few months to review these concepts and drafts by staff. These draft amendments were provided to the planning board for discussion in March and final recommendation in April. I had the pleasure to meet with Commissioners individually to review these changes, and am available to do the same for others. Tonight, we do request that the Commissioners hold a public hearing to hear comment on the proposed changes, but with such a large document, we're not proposing that adoption be considered until the June 13th meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, public hearing's open.
Carol Peoples.
Hi, Carol. Thanks for catching that typo, by the way.
Is this on? Oh, it is. Carol Peoples, 401 Hickory Street. I did catch the typo, and Michelle was so quick to get right back to me. I was, I really appreciate that. Um, but I do have a question. To me, the phrase "natural species," I've never heard that phrase before. I thought that the typo was supposed to be "native species," so I'd ask you to consider that as the appropriate, uh, word to use there. You know, it doesn't, nobody says "natural species." So that's the only comment I had.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
No more comment, or no more sign-ups.
All right. Uh, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Uh, any discussion from the Board?
Michelle, uh, Commissioner Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to say, uh, so you've been here how long, ma'am?
Since July 2022.
So less than a year, and what you've done, you know, the, U D O is like a constitution that's sent for our town, you know, it's, uh, it's our, it's our bible, pretty much, the way things work. It takes, it takes a lot of work to go in to make the changes and looking for the right thing to do, so, uh, to go from something that hadn't been worked on in a while, doing what she's doing, it's quite amazing work, so. Like the typo and things like that, when you miss little things, it's great to be cupped on it, but it's, uh, it's a long process, and if you're not in every meeting and every conversation, there's little catches in there, like, for example, the fence, the fencing that she was talking about on there. That was put in there exactly in case that, um, person comes up that's clearing the lot, and now that fence is up, so they can know that, hey, you don't cross over the fence and stuff. But there's little things in there, little notches that we've been trying to catch and watch out for and watch on, but I must admit, her, from July to right now, less than a year, she's done quite a good job, so. Just, um, give us some time, because we're working on trust what's going on up here and believe in us, and we'll make things happen. I want to say thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark. All right. All right, uh, now we'll take, uh, item 18, our comments from Town Clerk. All right, uh, our Newtown Attorneys, anything to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, let's, let's get you, hold it down just for a second, it'll turn green. Light up. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I'm Jill Quattlebaum, this is A W Grady, and just wanted to say we are very honored to be, have been appointed tonight as your Town Attorneys. We very much appreciate the opportunity, and we look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you both. Uh, Mr. Zap?
Other than thank you for allowing us to share the proposed budget, if there's any questions either from the Board or the community, as that process moves ahead to the June 13th meeting, remember that we're here and always available, and we're glad to answer any questions that do arise. Outside of that, I have nothing additional to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. Uh, Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So, um, first off, with the fishing tournament, I won't say again, thanks for all the people that applied for it. We have quite a lot of people out there. We have quite a lot of people out there. Thanks to my team for coming up with those names and the people that deserve it so much. It's happening again this year. Happy to report, so we're going to have another fishing tournament, try to raise another fund and give away a bunch of scholarships. So really appreciate that. On the other note, as far as the meeting goes tonight and the last few nights that's happened and stuff, just, you know, we're up here to hear what you got to say and listen to what you got to say. We're listening, we take it all down, I'm making notes all the time, and trying to really understand the path of it. You know, we're, what is it, 50 people in here now, 40, 50 people, and there's over 3,000 people that we're accounting for, too. So remember that, remember what we're doing. But I do ask that, we got some of the best staff that work at this town. I mean, they're amazing staff. The people that's out there every day, working the shovels, the policemen that are driving around, the firemen that are coming to your house and stuff, and when you call them, they're going to be there for you. So we have a long process where we interview these guys. We try to get the best of the best, because if somebody's breaking into my house, I want a policeman there that's a good policeman, or I want a fireman that can put out my house. So just be careful when you're out and about talking to them. Don't, and I'm not saying this group is doing it, but be careful, because they have feelings, too. We'll be the dartboard. If you want to hit us, hit us, but be nice to these people, because they're hard to get, good people. And as most of you have jobs or you work for places, I want you to understand that to find a great paramedic, somebody that you can trust to come in when your loved one's laying there on the border to save you, is important, and they should be paid accordingly. So please, 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 take care of these people, and let us be your dartboard if that's what you need and something needs to happen. But I love this town, I love the people here, and that's the reason I'm sitting up here. So please, please, just think about that when you talk, think about that when you talk to the public. But I do ask that one favor, and I'm here anytime you need. My number's on the website. Call me, call me anytime you want to call me, except for about midnight to 6:00. Other than that, thank you so much for letting me serve, and I do appreciate what's going on in this town. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Messer? Yes. Commissioner Messer?
Just one thing. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, and I thank most of you for being respectful. Like very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Vogel?
Congratulations to Chief Walker. Over half of the departures from the town over the last year, year and a half, have been through retirements, longtime people who worked for the town of Emerald Isle. I'm so happy with, I would stack them up against anyone working in any other town, but I'm very happy for him and congratulate him on his retirement, and he can go do whatever he wants. And that leaves room for new leaders to emerge in the town of Emerald Isle, which will be needed as we think about the next 10 to 20 years of our town. And I'll tack on to something that Mark said. I had a boss one time tell me that our people are our greatest asset, and I've carried that with me through my career and this seat here. And I do believe the people working in the town of Emerald Isle are our greatest asset for the taxpayers and for the future of Emerald Isle. So please treat them with respect, kindness, and professionalism. And my door is always open. So if you ever want to set the record straight with anything, my phone number's on the website, my email is there. I'm happy to have a conversation, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Loma?
Steve called and gave me all his time. I came prepared with two very brief notes, and I ended up with five, but they're all very brief notes. So, Mayor, I'll just roll through them. The first note is, appreciate everybody's patience on, call them projects and equipment ordering, our last budget, our current budget, and projected into our next budget, when Jim will no longer be here. There's over $10 million in various grant monies, which saves us all, I pay taxes, too, saves us all tax monies in the future. So some things are on back order, some projects are on back order, and just sincerely appreciate everybody's patience. Depending on where those grant funds come from, sometimes they come very quickly, and some don't. As Ms. Laura, if she was here, would probably say, amen. But thank you for your patience on projects and whatnot with the grant dollars. The second thing is, new note, Randy, happy to get up with you next week on those intersection stuff. I have the old corporate file from NC DOT. Since we see each other at Ace, Randy and I are competing to see who can spend more money at the Ace Hardware. Randy's winning right now. Catching up to him. But happy to come trade you some seafood nachos for the old drawings. We talk about the problem in short, and we'll talk about, the very short problem at that intersection is this. To fix it, it's an eminent domain deal. Short answer, this board, and I don't blame them, not big fans of eminent domain in the taking of a business property, so it's a challenge. But I'll share that with you, and we can have Pepsi and talk about it. Number three is, pre-planned note, to me, it's a revised Neighborhood Watch newsletter. The last one just came out. It's easy to sign up. Just go on the town's website, under Police Department, and Neighborhood Watch, there's a little fill-in-the-blank form to get your Neighborhood Watch newsletter. So thanks, Mr. Tom Rule, chief, I'm assuming Sandra works, Ms. Shandor works on that, too, and others, but it's been revised. It's much shorter to read, but it has more content in it. Highly encourage it, a great way to stay informed. Number four, I don't have five notes, just four notes. Number four, some serious and some humor. So this week, Thursday and Friday, on behalf of the North Carolina Beach Inlet Waterway Association, very pleased to host, again, for the fourth year, about 200, give or take, coastal geologists, engineers, surveyors, PhDs from our local universities, from England, from the Netherlands, and some vendors as well. We come together and we look at coastal resiliency, not just on the ocean side, but the sound side as well. We also bring in commentary from our national senators. We will Zoom with our congressional leaders. We will have some senators in person. We will have some North Carolina senators and some North Carolina representatives in person. It's a big two days. And so very proud to bring them back, and the humorous part is to our restaurant owners and our business leaders that on Thursday night and Friday night, even Wednesday night, if by chance you see some ultra non-tanned people, don't let this get out now, ultra non-tanned people out and about looking for a meal, be nice to them. We are working on changing legislation at the federal level, at the state level, and millions in grant dollars. So if you see somebody out there, help them, be nice, buy them a drink, send my colleague their ticket, all right? We want to be nice to them. Wednesday night, Thursday, Friday, you'll see them out and about, and that'll be at the Islander. They're very good hosts for us. And Randy, so it'll be next week, I've got that conference that I'm accountable for, but next week, we'll get together and have that Pepsi. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. First and foremost, one more congratulations to a very deserving Chief Walker. It's, like I said, we can't say enough good things about it for what he's done for our town, and we're better off having had him at the helm for 34 years and 36 total. I want to thank everybody in the room for coming tonight. For those of you that were able to stay, I'd like to extend another thank you for being able to stay to the end of the meeting. I know public comment portion of the agenda has gotten more and more popular in the past few months, and I think that's great. I think that's okay. But I think if you're able to stay and hear some feedback, stay for the presentations that come, the public hearings, the staff presentations, I think it's important, whether it changes your mind or not, whether you agree with it or not, I think it's important to have all the pieces of information, because we all leave more informed as a result. I want to thank all of our town staff, anywhere from our new guy Tyler to Chief Walker retiring, Matt Zap, Michelle, everybody in between. I'm grateful, whether it takes 75 full and 100 and something part, a number higher or a number lower, my perception is that, I drive up and down Emerald Drive, and I know I live in a beautiful place, and I know that if I call the fire department, they're going to be there. If I call the police department, they're going to be there. And whether that's a higher number or a lower number, I feel good and I feel safe and I feel protected. What we pay them, I know if I had to buy my house here today, like I did nine and a half years ago, I'd have to make a whole lot more money than I made now. Everything's more expensive. It takes a lot of money to operate a household, whether there's one of you, four of you, 10 of you. Like I said, I'm no mathematician, I'm no budget coordinator, but I do know that we, A, you're not adding any additional staff this year, hopefully we don't lose any, but I have seen staff's challenges with acquiring and retaining talent and not losing them either by attrition or not taking the job in the first place. Is there a better answer somewhere in the middle? Maybe. But I'm grateful for what we have, and I'm grateful for the work that our elected officials do, grateful for the time, effort, and consideration they put into making the decisions. I'm grateful for Matt and the entire staff for executing those decisions. We'll have you, or encourage you, ask you respectfully to remember that regardless of what's proposed to the board, the board has the ultimate decision in what is approved or denied or altered. Again, I thank you all for being here. Thank you, board. Congratulations to our new attorney. Thank you, town staff. Thank you, residents. I, again, am always available. My door is always open. I'm happy to meet with you one-on-one with town staff, two commissioners at a time, so we don't violate sunshine law. I think we could all get a lot more out of some more individual conversations, and I welcome you back for public comment on June 13th. Nothing more from me. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
You all have a good night. [applause]